Welcome.
Hi, how are you? Been very much as. I saw that, but we're not allowed to. Remember, these are that sort of.
We really did have a party. And we got John.
The news is we haven't started that time.
I understand.
We haven't started that time. I guarantee both you and me are all sitting here tapping our toes like.
Yes, I'll talk about that. Mr. Watson.
Okay.
Tomorrow, Public Safety, five o'clock downstairs. You'll be here because Mr. Lampy won't, so I want to make sure we had a quarter.
You're here.
He's not, but we'll have enough if you're there.
Hello, Emily.
Hi.
All right, welcome, everyone. I'm going to ask Reverend Bisansson if you'd like to give an invocation.
I would like to share from First Timothy two. First of all, then, I urge that supplications, prayers, intercessions, and thanksgivings be made for all people, for all of those who are in high positions, that we may lead a peaceful and quiet life, godly and dignified in every way. This is good and is pleasing in the sight of God, our Savior. Gracious and merciful God, we do thank you for another day you've blessed us with. This almost reminds us, this is the day the Lord has made. Let us rejoice and be glad in it, and we do rejoice, Lord, in every day you give to us. We rejoice, Lord, for living in this city. We thank you, Lord, for the mayor and for the aldermen and women who have offered their time to serve as people on this council, for all of those who are in paid positions, and for all of those who have come out, Lord, to express their thoughts and their ideas and their opinions. Father, we know that it is all through your glory, it is all through what you have given us, that we are able to live peaceful lives in this city. So, Lord, I just pray for all of those who serve this community, fire and police and EMTs, for the Health Department, for Park and Rec, senior citizens, for everyone who is a part of this city. Lord, we give you thanks, and we give it all to you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Welcome, everyone. I'll let you know, we will go to a closed session later, and that time we'll ask everyone to exit the room for that brief time. When that happens, you're free to come back if you want. Don't wait until that closed session is over. Sharon, you can take the roll, please.
Davis, Lampy, Berg, Barts, Blankie.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Arnett.
Here.
Wetzel.
Here.
Mildenhauer.
Okay, please hand up a Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get started, I'd like to see if there's any council member that'd like to make a change to the agenda. Alden Lampy.
Mayor, I've moved to advance resolution item twelve A pertaining to Exhibits ninety-seven, thirty-eight to a position just after item eight C on tonight's agenda.
Okay, move that Resolution A to in between C and D and section eight. Have a motion.
I'll second that.
Davis.
I'll second that.
Second by Davis. And discussion. Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. So moved. Me in minutes from April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Any comments?
Mayor, I move to approve. That's submitted.
Motion by Arnett.
Second.
Second by Blankie. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, comments, suggestions from citizens present. Everyone's within three minutes. If you get close to that three minutes, I'll just kind of wave my hands, see if you can kind of wrap up your thoughts. If you'd like to have any public comment. We also have a couple of public hearings after, so if you're here for a public hearing, if you want to wait until the public comments section is done, maybe the time to do that. But is there any citizens not here for a public hearing that like to come up and speak to the mic? You may do this at that time. Do that this time.
We do have Kathy Huggan. Carl Zarling.
Hi, everybody. Mr. Mayor, my name is Carl Zarling. I'm actually, maybe I am getting ahead of it, but I'm here to offer my support for the Milford Street two-family rezone. I'm Jefferson County Supervisor for District Four on South Washington Street, and actually my district does go all the way out there. It just happened to be all the way south and just west of Milford there. And additionally, I'm a full-time Realtor for Shore West Realtors. I chair the Housing Committee newly created for JCEDC under Thrive BD. And so, you know, I'll say sort of, you know, as with my Realtor hat on, these twin homes are, frankly, they're a pretty great idea. They, you know, when people ask me what kind of housing we need in Watertown, and people ask me a lot, whether it's on, you know, economic development committees, Madrep Committee, whatever, what does Watertown need, my answer is yes. And, you know, again, just numbers, twenty eleven to twenty twenty-three, I think we've lost something like twelve hundred and fifty people or something like that. So we're, you know, we're on a downward trajectory at a time when really we probably would like to be an upward trajectory in terms of being able to have funding for all the nice things we like in town. These twin homes, I'll tell you anecdotally, I've got a fair amount of experience with them. In fact, a client of mine just recently purchased one over in Elderberry, if you want to look at a pretty good, pretty apples-to-apples, you know, development over in the town of Oconomowoc, similar proximity to the city, similar density, mixed between single-family and twin homes, peacefully coexisting. People like, you know, this particular client is retired cop, great guy, he and his wife, they need a, you know, single-floor structure. They don't need a ton of square footage. We looked and looked and looked for a regular standalone single-family home all over the place and didn't find the right fit for them. This side-by-side thing was a great solution, and I promise you, they're one of many, many, many people that would fit that need and use. So, again, strongly support the idea of not being afraid of the concept of twin home, you know, zero lot line stuff. And additionally, I'll say that a lot of people really like them when they don't have a lot of big HOA fees attached to them. This would be super minimal, and that way it sounds like just really something to take care of, any retention, water, anything like that. You know, people love the idea of that as opposed to getting into a unit that's going to cost them two fifty or three hundred a month. So, anyway, strongly in support, and I hope you can make the zoning changes necessary. Thank you all.
Anybody else? Okay. Okay, next, open a public hearing. Cole Street, this continuance of public way. Anybody want to speak on that particular change? Okay, I'll close that public hearing and open up the second one, rezone eight four eight Milford Street, two nine one zero eight one five zero seven four one zero six one from the single-family residential zoning district to the two-family residential zoning district. Anybody wish to comment on that change?
Kathy Huggan.
Well, while she's coming up, related to Mr. Zarling's comments about the same parcel a few moments ago, are those going to be considered part of the public hearing, or otherwise, how do we capture that?
I will put them in the comments and suggestions from citizens present rather than in public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Is it me?
Go ahead, ma'am, yes.
Okay, first of all, I just want to say, I think this whole process of me coming up, saying, asking questions, really kind of stinks because I never get an answer, and I can never have a conversation with anybody. I can ask a question, but until I get a question, an answer back, I might have another question. So this whole format, I think, is really kind of hard to, to make a conversation. But anyway, going on. What is the advantage or, you know, or not reasoning for having these two-family homes? I guess that's, that's one of my questions. Again, I get no answer, so I'll just move on to the next one. And of course, the Realtor's going to want that. Yes, that's, that's good for him. And this HOA that he talked of, who does the HOA go to and what is it for? Because I know on the other side, I live on Casey Drive, and Ridge Court over there, they have an HOA. I have no idea who it goes to, it does nothing, nothing gets done, I don't know what's happening with that HOA. So, that's one question. And what are these homes going to cost now? Tariffs have kicked in. It's going to be a lot more to build these. Initially, you said it was going to be four fifty to five hundred thousand dollar homes. Those are expensive homes for people that live in Watertown. I don't know if the employers here, somebody's working down at the Lawn Blade place, Barton, sorry, forgot the name, is not making enough to pay for a five hundred thousand dollar home and seven thousand dollars in taxes. So who's going to be buying these? Are they really going to be members of our community, or are they just going to be in-and-out commuters? And, again, these tariffs have got to make that. Making Watertown bigger is not what everybody wants. We don't, just because you can, doesn't mean you have to. Yes, we can expand and expand and expand, and pretty soon we will be Oconomowoc West. We don't want that. At least I don't. I moved to Watertown because it was a small town. It was away from the city. I came from Milwaukee. Lord knows, I wanted to get away from Milwaukee, but at this pace, Milwaukee's going to catch up with me. So, just because you can, doesn't mean we should. So can we just think about that before we move on with all of this? Maybe too late. I think many of you have already made your decision. But bigger city means bigger problems. So is that what Watertown really wants? I don't know. I know I don't. I came for the quiet, slow town, you know, small town. So, that being said, I looked on the map that you had put out from the last meeting, and what is there now is the subdivision with a park on the south side. If we do move forward with this, which unfortunately I think we're going to, but maybe we could flip-flop the park and the subdivision, so the park is between the existing homes and the new homes, the new homes that are here, or the, our existing homes, Casey Drive and Ridge Court, they have a lot of kids. It would be nice to have that nice big park between us. Safety-wise, they won't have to travel, they'd only have to travel about two or three blocks, whereas if it's on the south side of this new subdivision that's going in, it's going to be another three or four blocks, a lot of, a lot of safety issues there with traffic and things like that. So that would just be one suggestion, if it does move forward, to possibly just flip-flop the park for a little bit closer convenience for everybody. So, that's that.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else for a public hearing?
Bob Wieland.
Good evening. I'm Bob Wieland. I'm the person selling this land to those. And I did encourage them to put in the multifamily homes. I've had experience in, when I, when I first moved back from New York to Germantown, Wisconsin, I really appreciated being able to move into a side-by-side. It really was helpful for us at the time. And I know a lot of people are in a situation where they like a place next door where their parents can live. Multi-generational settings are always pretty nice to have, and it is a lower maintenance type affair, a lower cost with a common wall, smaller lots. So I really think that it's beneficial for, for the people living there, and I hope you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Eric Kluge, nine fifteen Casey Drive. Just wanted to touch base on the, on the zoning thing here. You know, since this annexation has started, we've, we've changed the goalposts four times now. Started off as a forty-eight home lot, then went to fifty-four, then fifty-four with twin homes, now fifty-four with fourteen twin homes. So, you know, when's, when's enough enough? When are we going to tell the developer to, you know, let's, let's stop just expanding, let's stop moving forward and changing this, this plan that some of us citizens in that area in Hep Heights have began to accept? And I say that not willingly, but we've, we've understand that there is a need, there is, there's some, some goodness that could come out of this, but at the same time, we keep changing the goalposts, and that's, that's just not, not what I'm looking for when I think of Watertown. The other thing I just wanted to kind of address is, you know, the last administration, some of the, the comments that I always heard was that this loose developer is a great developer. And I asked the common council, has, has anybody know how many loose homes are built in, in Watertown? Did anybody talk to those, those people that own loose homes? Just by my quick count, there's fifty-seven homes in Watertown, and I've talked to many of them. I wouldn't say all of them, but many. And there is not a very good favoring of loose homes within the city of Watertown. I was asking three questions. Are you satisfied with your home? Are you satisfied with the warranty service that you've got? If you had any issues, then would you ever buy again? And the knows, knows, and absolutely not was astounding. So, as a, as a council, I would implore you guys to, to maybe take a look at the building records and, and go out and talk to some of those people that own loose homes and see what the true Watertown vision is like, because it's not very favorable to loose homes. So, if you guys want to bring in this developer and get them in your back pocket, I understand that, and that's business, and that's what this is all about, but at the same time, you know, this council, at the end of the day, it works for the people. So, just something to think about. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kluge. Any other comments in the public hearing?
Dean Gigliano, nine oh nine Casey Drive.
Thank you.
I spoke at the meeting on four fourteen, so I'm going to go back to some of the notes that I took there. One of the first ones, there's a lot of kids in our current neighborhood at Hep Heights, and with the new development, especially twin homes, it's probably going to be young families that move into those with more new children. If you go back there, we're quite separated from the city. We don't have any parks near us except for Grinwald, but we have to walk, you know, County Road A to get there, and there is no sidewalk there at all, so it's not necessarily safe to get to. So, I, if, if they do, if you do end up going with the twin homes and you do end up start building back there, I would strongly suggest having a place for the children in the community to be able to play or have a safer means for them to get to, you know, the park, Grinwald or to get downtown somewhere. I mean, we should start having that already or start thinking about that already with the community that we already have up there. Next one goes along the lines of that. So, back when I spoke a month ago, we just lost the EEC, and both of my children were there, and it was really frustrating and disappointing, the YMCA. And we got really lucky to find another daycare to pick them up, but a lot of the people, there are a lot of the children that my children went to school with, didn't, because we don't have daycare to fulfill the needs in this community right now as we speak. So if we're going to start bringing more families into this community, we got to start thinking about the resources that we're willing to offer or have for the children that are going to be coming into this community and the families that are going to be moving in to this community. I feel like that kind of needs to be planned and thought about first before we start bringing more people in here. Next one I have, goes along similar to what Kathy was saying, but there's some economic turmoil right now, which I'm sure we all can agree with, the tariffs, which is going to jack up the prices for everything, including building materials and generally speaking, the price of housing. Every single time I'm online or on social media, all I see is a lot of people asking for more lower-income housing, not necessarily four hundred, four hundred and fifty thousand dollar houses, which at least what the valuation is, you know, in the neighborhood that I'm currently in, so I'm assuming that's going to be a similar valuation to the houses that are going to be built by me. So I just don't understand necessarily where the people are going to come from that are going to be able to afford these houses or going to move into these houses, especially if they're so separated from the community itself again, and we don't have the resources for them if they end up moving in here. On top of that, since September of last year, we're seeing about a seven to eight percent decline in real estate purchases, which I'm sure you're probably feeling. But there's, there's a decline in people buying houses at the moment because prices are so high and interest rates are also so high. So again, how long are these houses going to just sit there on the market and, and not be bought instead of being filled with new community members? So it's just a few things I want you to think about and consider. Thanks.
Thank you very much, sir. Any other comments for public hearing?
Here, just for what it's worth, I'm here, if anybody wanted to directly ask me any questions, I'd be happy to give my two cents on anything really that might be in my wheelhouse. So just off the top of my head, I was going to do the time and place.
Okay.
Question-answer area, but I will just, just.
Not making enough to pay for a $500,000 home and $7,000 in taxes. So who's going to be buying these? Are they really going to be members of our community? Or are they just going to be in and out commuters? And again, these tariffs have got to make that. Making Watertown bigger is not what everybody wants. We don't, just because you can, doesn't mean you have to. Yes, we can expand and expand and expand. And pretty soon, we will be, Oconom will walk west. We don't want that. At least I don't. I moved to Watertown because it was a small town. It was away from the city. I came from Milwaukee. Lord knows, I wanted to get away from Milwaukee. But at this pace, Milwaukee's going to catch up with me. So just because you can, doesn't mean we should. So can we just think about that before we move on with all of this? Maybe too late. I think many of you have already made your decision. But bigger city means bigger problems. So is that what Watertown really wants? I don't know. I know I don't. I came for the quiet, slow town, you know, small town. So that being said, I looked on the map that you had put out from the last meeting. And what is there now is the subdivision with a park on the south side. If we do move forward with this, which unfortunately, I think we're going to, but maybe we could flip-flop the park and the subdivision. So the park is between the existing homes and the new homes. The new homes that are here, or the, our existing homes, Casey Drive and Ridge Court, they have a lot of kids. It would be nice to have that nice, big park between us. Safety-wise, they won't have to travel. They'd only have to travel about two or three blocks. Whereas if it's on the south side of this new subdivision that's going in, it's going to be another three or four blocks. A lot of, a lot of safety issues there with traffic and things like that. So that would just be one suggestion. If it does move forward, to possibly just flip-flop the park for a little bit closer convenience for everybody. So that's that.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other public hearing?
Bob Wieland.
Good evening. I'm Bob Wieland. I'm the person selling this land to Loos. And I did encourage them to put in the multifamily homes. I've had experience in, when I first moved back from New York to Germantown, Wisconsin. I really appreciated being able to move into a side-by-side. It really was helpful for us at the time. And I know a lot of people are in a situation where they like a place next door where their parents can live. Multi-generational settings are always pretty nice to have. And it is a lower maintenance type affair, a lower cost with a common wall, smaller lots. So I really think that it's beneficial for the people living there. And I hope you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Eric Kluge, 915 Casey Drive. Just wanted to touch base on the zoning thing here. You know, since this annexation has started, we've changed the goalposts four times now. Started off as a 48-home lot, then went to 54, then 54 with twin homes, now 54 with 14 twin homes. So, you know, when's enough enough? When are we going to tell the developer to, you know, let's stop just expanding? Let's stop moving forward and changing this plan that some of us citizens in that area in Hep Heights have began to accept? And I say that not willingly, but we've understood that there is a need. There's some goodness that could come out of this. But at the same time, we keep changing the goalposts. And that's just not what I'm looking for when I think of Watertown. The other thing I just wanted to kind of address is, you know, the last administration, some of the comments that I always heard was that this loose developer is a great developer. And I asked the common council, has anybody know how many loose homes are built in Watertown? Did anybody talk to those people that own loose homes? Just by my quick count, there's 57 homes in Watertown. And I've talked to many of them. I wouldn't say all of them, but many. And there is not a very good favoring of loose homes within the city of Watertown. I was asking three questions. Are you satisfied with your home? Are you satisfied with the warranty service that you've got? If you had any issues, then would you ever buy again? And the noes, noes, and absolutely not was astounding. So as a council, I would implore you guys to maybe take a look at the building records and go out and talk to some of those people that own loose homes and see what the true Watertown vision is like. Because it's not very favorable to loose homes. So if you guys want to bring in this developer and get them in your back pocket, I understand that, and that's business, and that's what this is all about. But at the same time, you know, this council, at the end of the day, it works for the people. So just something to think about. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kluge. Any other comments on the public hearing?
Dean Gigliano, 909 Casey Drive.
Thank you.
I spoke at the meeting on 414, so I'm going to go back to some of the notes that I took there. One of the first ones, there's a lot of kids in our current neighborhood at Hep Heights. And with the new development, especially twin homes, it's probably going to be young families that move into those with more new children. If you go back there, we're quite separated from the city. We don't have any parks near us except for Grinwald, but we have to walk, you know, County Road A to get there. And there is no sidewalk there at all. So it's not necessarily safe to get to. So I, if they do, if you do end up going with the twin homes and you do end up start building back there, I would strongly suggest having a place for the children in the community to be able to play or have a safer means for them to get to, you know, the park, Grinwalder, to get downtown somewhere. I mean, we should start having that already or start thinking about that already with the community that we already have up there. Next one goes along the lines of that. So back when I spoke a month ago, we just lost the EEC. And both of my children were there. And it was really frustrating and disappointing, the YMCA. And we got really lucky to find another daycare to pick them up. But a lot of the people, there are a lot of the children that my children went to school with, didn't, because we don't have daycare to fulfill the needs in this community right now as we speak. So if we're going to start bringing more families into this community, we got to start thinking about the resources that we're willing to offer or have for the children that are going to be coming into this community and the families that are going to be moving in to this community. I feel like that kind of needs to be planned and thought about first before we start bringing more people in here. Next one I have, goes along similar to what Kathy was saying, but there's some economic turmoil right now, which I'm sure we all can agree with the tariffs, which is going to jack up the prices for everything, including building materials and generally speaking, the price of housing. Every single time I'm online or on social media, all I see is a lot of people asking for more lower-income housing, not necessarily $400, $450,000 houses, which at least what the valuation is, you know, in the neighborhood that I'm currently in. So I'm assuming that's going to be a similar valuation to the houses that are going to be built by me. So I just don't understand necessarily where the people are going to come from that are going to be able to afford these houses or are going to move into these houses, especially if they're so separated from the community itself again. And we don't have the resources for them if they end up moving in here. On top of that, since September of last year, we're seeing about a 7% to 8% decline in real estate purchases, which I'm sure you're probably feeling. But there's a decline in people buying houses at the moment because prices are so high and interest rates are also so high. So again, how long are these houses going to just sit there on the market and not be bought instead of being filled with new community members? So it's just a few things I want you to think about and consider. Thanks.
Thank you very much, sir. Any other comments for public hearing?
Here, just for what it's worth, I'm here if anybody wanted to directly ask me any questions. I'd be happy to give my two cents on anything really that might be in my wheelhouse. So just off the top of my head, I was over to the time and place.
Okay.
Question-answer area, but I will just definitely answer to it.
Okay, Mr. Zarley, I appreciate that. Yeah, okay. This public hearing, seriously, you can come right up to the mic and state your name and your address, okay?
I'm David Werning. I'm the Director of Land Development with Cramar with Loos Homes. And bear with me, I'm new to this role. I kind of came in in the middle of this project. And I hear the comments. And these are, I believe, heartfelt comments from people that live in this community and care about this community. Loos Homes has been in this community for a long time. And we feel the same way. This hearing, I believe, is for the rezoning of some lots to be twin homes. We feel there's a need, from what we've heard from the city, from the county, in Jefferson County, for affordable housing. And this opens the door for people that may not be able to afford a single-family home. I've heard the price of housing and tariffs and concerns of costs going up. Our goal is for these twin homes to start somewhere in the mid to upper 300s, underneath what new housing is going for right now. There's families that need homes. And this may open the door to somebody that couldn't otherwise afford a home. And that's why we're doing it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need Mr. Werning's address?
435 Billy Quahle, Johnson Creek. Can I address the one comment?
You already went, sir. Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing that, I'll close the public hearing. I'll move on to reports. First report, Parks Recreation Forestry Minutes from March 17th, 2025. Just moving down the line. Okay. And Public Safety Minutes from April 2nd, 2025. Finance Committee Minutes from April 7th, 2025. Resort Preservation Minutes from April 8th, 2025. Comments? Board of Health Minutes from April 14th, 2025.
Mayor Stocks?
Yes.
I have one comment on the Board of Health Minutes.
Okay.
It's on page 20 of the council packet. Okay, I'm getting there myself. Item nine, review and discuss lot adjacent to Health Department parking lot. An offer to purchase was sent to the owner of the lot by the city attorney and the mayor. There has not been a response from the owner. The remaining public health ARPA funding will be used to purchase the lot and park towards the building. The remaining funding will be secured from the environmental health fund balance. This came before Plan Commission. I raised this concern there, and I will raise it again here. This is in regards to the space needs analysis that was presented to this body at the end of last year. This body has yet to approve that space needs analysis. I think it is premature to be buying property based on a study that we have yet to approve. It's putting more land on the city tax, or taking more land off the city tax or else putting it in city hands before we've made a decision if that's a direction we want to go. I think that this is definitely premature, and I think we should use, exercise caution in deciding whether or not we're going to purchase land without determining that we actually want to use it.
Alden Lampy.
Just, can you point me to the item that we're talking about?
Item number nine, page 20 of the council packet. The lot adjacent to the Health Department parking lot. It is a lot on Second Street, directly behind the current Health Department. And that was in the space needs analysis that was presented to us, I believe it was in November of last year.
Thank you.
Any more comments on that one?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, but sir, not.
I would echo Alder Person Blankie's concerns about that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I could be wrong, and Carol's here. She, I don't know if she could correct me. I believe that space needs analysis actually went a different direction and had it being built out to the front with a drive-through and an overhang. I could be wrong, but I think that was the direction that particular space needs analysis took.
You know, Carol, you can answer this question. Yep?
So the space needs assessment did include that lot, but used it as a parking lot and took part of our current parking lot for an extension of the building. So it was part of that space needs assessment.
Thank you.
No more comments on that. I want to move on to Plan Commission Minutes from April 14th. RDA Minutes from April 16th. Town Square Programming Commission Minutes from April 16th. And Public Works Minutes from April 22nd. Okay. No more comments. We'll move on to Communication Recommendations. Recognition of Alder Person Steve Board. You said two words, right? Come out of your seat. Mr. Board, beyond the, in Watertown, I'd like to thank you for your service as alderman. Thank you for the service you've given all these years in the community and the board you've served on, and the service you're going to give in the future. Appreciate that very much, all the work you've done. Your alderman, I really respect you a lot, Mr. Board. Alden Lampy, come on up. Watertown thanks all your services while I've served six years as council member. You're always well-prepared for meetings, safety meetings, transit. You always had the taxpayers in mind. You always did your homework. Appreciate all the service you did for Watertown. And I'll hopefully continue to service in the future. Thank you. Come on up, Alden Lampy. Mayor McFarland, come on up. If you want to bring your family to, Ken. Okay.
I thought they were going to my table.
Okay. Yep.
I got to move this one maybe in motion to change it.
I did, but the resolution comes after the recognition. Yes, sir.
I have flashbacks when I first met you, Mr. McFarland, as an alderperson.
Oh, I'm old.
12 years ago. Oh, you just want me to bring it up? Sorry.
Someone forgot to take the candles.
I'm sorry.
It's normally my turn.
I will read this. So, okay.
He's got one.
There we go, okay.
Hold on, take a candle. You take your light back. Not that this is my duty to run.
Thank you, sir.
It's a hard habit to let go.
Okay, I'll let you read those two. Whereas, Mayor Emily McFarland has faithfully served the city of Watertown with dedication, integrity, and leadership throughout her terms as mayor. And whereas, she has served the citizens of Watertown for more than 11 years, serving on the Watertown Common Council since August 16th, 2013, and then served as mayor since April 16th, 2019. And whereas, under her leadership, the city has achieved significant milestones, including development, infrastructure improvements, public safety initiatives, community programs, and economic growth. And whereas, Mayor McFarland has been a steadfast advocate for the residents of Watertown, fostering community engagement, promoting economic development, and enhancing the quality of life for all citizens. And whereas, she has worked tirelessly with city officials, community organizations, and businesses to ensure the continued progress and prosperity of Watertown. And whereas, as she concludes her term, it is fitting that the city of Watertown formally recognizes and expresses gratitude for her service and contributions. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Common Council of the city of Watertown that the Common Council extends sincere appreciation and recognition to Mayor Emily McFarland for her outstanding leadership and unwavering commitment to the city, and wishes her many happy and rewarding years ahead. Hey, we'll let you have the mic for just a bit, if you want to say some words. But first of all, a phrase that I think everyone here is familiar with, we've used it tonight already a few times on a few of these resolutions. There's no greater challenge, there is no greater honor than to be in public service, quote by Conde Lisa Rice, who I think many of you are familiar with, for her many years advocating for others as well. Would you like to say a word or two?
Well, I didn't plan on saying anything, and this meeting's probably already longer than people want it to be. So I'll just say, I've said this a few times in this transition. I've been so privileged to serve with a tremendous team. I miss my internal city team very much. You all sitting around this, you have an excellent resource in the people that work here day in and day out for you. And I've just felt so privileged to be able to work with elected officials throughout my 11 or so years that really had the best interests of this city in mind. And so I'm so grateful to have served in a way that we were poised for really excellent change at a really great time. And when I was, I think, in my late twenties, without either of these two boys sitting in this room, I told Kyle, like, hey, I think I might go be on the Common Council. And I stood in here and said that my goal was to make a better version of Watertown than I grew up in, so that these two boys and their friends and the grandkids of this community and all the other youth here would have an even better childhood than I did. And I think we were successful in that. And that was in tremendous part to our excellent community stakeholders, our really great elected officials, and my really legit city team. So thank you all so much for this. I hate these kind of things, but I sure appreciate them. And I think they're just really important to recognize, people who are willing to give of their time and their talent to try to make a better, a better community for everyone else. So thank you, and I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor?
Okay, continue on with Communication Recommendations. Our Watertown Department of Public Health Annual Report.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I may, as a point of order, I believe you need to take action on resolution 9738.
Sorry, I got thrown off a little bit there. All right. I forgot my move to resolution. Exhibit 9738. Motion by Davis, second by Bartz. Any discussion? Are we on? Okay, you take the roll, please.
Davis?
Hi.
Lampy?
Hi.
Bartz? Blankie?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Arnett?
Hi.
Wetzel?
Hi.
Mildenhauer?
Hi.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Arnett.
You're welcome.
All back to Communication Recommendations. 2024 Watertown Department of Public Health Annual Report.
Mayor Stocks?
Yes.
Just one item, if it dovetails here. The space needs analysis I was referring to for this item with the Public Health Department, that was on our 9/17, so September 17th, not November of '24, for everyone's reference.
You want to, the date changed to, was it Mr. Blankie again?
September 17th of 2024.
Okay.
I believe I said it was in November of 2024. I was mistaken, it was September.
Mr. Lampy?
Mayor, I have a, I have a couple of things here. And if I wouldn't mind, if, you know, Ms. Quest would join me at the podium, I may have a question or two. I want to say thank you for putting this report together. I do miss a little bit sometimes my time on the Health Board. I guess I wanted to start on page 16 of the report, which is page 47, I believe, in the packet, where you have that just excellent smoking flyer. One of the challenges that we have in Park and Rec, as well as I think throughout the city on social media, is explaining the smoking ordinance, why it is there, and some of the areas that are prevented. I just, I just wanted to point this one out. It's just an excellent, one-page visual that I hope gets shared throughout the rest of the city and potentially use on our social media. Moving on a little bit, one of the other things that caught my eye, and this is on page 22 of the report, page 53 of your packet. I think I've got this right. All right. I'm going to mispronounce his name here. I don't know how, I never ran into him.
Graieski.
Graieski. Okay, so Dr. Graieski was honored for his work in immunizations, about 30 years with the Health Department. And I would, I guess, suggest maybe offering a council-wide recommendation for that degree of service. He's certainly seen some stuff. And as noted in here, he was, went through the COVID era, where there are many different viewpoints presented, but definitely did a great job.
Yep, I will move that forward. Thank you.
The last one I wanted to ask about was on page 25, which is located on page 56 of the packet. There was a brief mention here of AmeriCorps. And I know that that has been in some of the national news lately. And if, I was just wondering if you could kind of help me walk through how much of AmeriCorps we've depended on in the past couple of years and what the prognosis is for that role, that position, that interaction going forward.
Yeah, so we at the Health Department had the good fortune of having a full-time AmeriCorps staff for one year, and then that person continued for a second year, part-time. And that person picked up many programs and really established connections with community groups in areas that we just didn't have the capacity to do. I feel privileged to have worked with that individual. That individual is a resident of Watertown, has lived here, continues to live here. And we benefited, the city benefited from the work that that person put into the programs and services for the Health Department, but also for the city of Watertown. And currently, we have, I currently have a graduate student, so we do not have an AmeriCorps staff person at this time. And now the program is gone. I've been notified by our contacts with AmeriCorps that it's no longer available. And it is, it will be a gap as we move forward, certainly.
Thank you for that.
Yep, you're welcome. Thank you for asking.
Any other questions on the Health Annual Report? Comments? Okay, move on to the City Annual Report? And the Parks Recreation Forestry Annual Report. Sorry.
I want to make sure I'm not the only person commenting here for a second.
You go ahead, Alden Lampy.
Okay. Again, I have a number of things here that I did want to talk about. Housing is mentioned prominently in the city's report. It's on page one. It's again on page seven or so. I think those are pages 67 and 53 in your packet. seven or so, I think those are pages sixty-seven and fifty-three in your packet. That does mention an upward growth curve, specifically citing the Rock River Ridge with its seventy, seventy-eight single-family homes, eighteen twin-family homes, seventy, ninety-two rental homes, and also cites that there is about nine hundred housing units in the pipeline, which, as you've probably heard in my previous council pieces, I think it's very important to keep that momentum moving forward. Page sixty-eight, there's brief mention of the first kindergarten, and I think this is a surprise, it made, it made the city packets well mention it. There's an addition being put on to America's First Kindergarten, so that is, that's, that's actually a construction project that's happening out there, educational opportunities for kids and another reason to visit the Octagon House. The last thing I wanted to comment on was, oh, two things here. Park and Rec and Public Library along with the taxi. I'm going to try to lump those things together because we spend a lot of time and certainly on, on things like police and fire, and we know that that constitutes a very large part of the budget here, but we also have a lot of valuable services that we provide the community, particularly seniors. You take a look at the services that are done at the Public Library, the services that are done at the Service, Senior Center, you look at the transportation that's done in the taxi, I don't know if there was mention of that in the annual report, but I would definitely appreciate, you know, views of how many miles and folks we serve in there. I think all of us know one or two people who are still isolated and don't leave the house, basically Amazon it in, maybe use Watertown TV to watch a church service. There are still more people out there that can be served by combining those, those services. There's capacity that we have, we just have a fantastic situation for seniors, especially here in Watertown, that if you piece these things together, I want to make sure that that stays on everybody's radar, especially as we move into budget season. The last one's going to sound a little bit self-serving, but Park and Rec, page five, seventy-eight in the packet, there's mention there of Riverfest and about twenty-six other events with about forty-two thousand participants, so Riverfest is about forty thousand of those, maybe. So, that's one thing to keep in mind when we are going to approach looking at potentially some future supports or future coordination with Riverfest, and of course, I have to point out that I'm also on that board.
Thank you, Alderman Lampy. All right, new city website introduction? Lisa?
Yeah. Want me to share my screen?
Yeah, plug in.
Plug it in, we're going to, okay. I am, well, I will, and, we're trying to share because I actually don't have an HDMI. But while I'm joining up here, hi, for those of you I haven't yet met, my name is Lisa Familaro. I am the Meeting Communications Director. As many of you know, we, there we are, and then I'll share. We have a new website. It went live the end of March, I want to say it was actually March thirty-first, and it's been sort of a soft startup. We anticipated that we would want to work out some bugs before we really started promoting, and now it's ready to show off. So, and Alderman Lampy was so kind as to invite me here. I think so, I don't think I have a...
What was that? Control now, Lisa?
Not yet.
I just practiced this two weeks ago in here, too.
Oh, there we go, got it. Yeah, we did. Okay, here we go. So, I'll show it off really quickly. Can you see that yet? No. Yes, I definitely want to share. Okay, I did take some, make some notes for myself, just so I don't skip over anything. So, I'll break this down really quickly for you and just let you know what is what, and then there'll be time for questions, hopefully. And here it is, you can see, it looks, it does look similar to our old website, but the platform behind is completely different. So, we have switched from one platform to another. That happened at the end of last year slash beginning of this year. We went with a new vendor. So, just really briefly, I'll go over the top menu, this is much as you have seen before. We have a lot of content on the website, as I think you all know, and a lot of it is accessible through here. We do have a top menu where you can directly get to news events and some of the webpages, the live feed as well. And then the bulk of our content is here, in departments, actually. We have a ton of it there, so same, same as our old website. But a couple new features that you might not be familiar with are down here. We do have this news section that we have, actually, let me skip back up and go into our buttons here. I have some hot buttons here for commonly, commonly needed items, how can I pay my utility bill, I need to find the meeting notices, things of that nature. I should have just grabbed the handheld because I feel like I'm neglecting eye contact over on the side. I apologize. And we do have a weekly newsletter signup, all of that stuff on here. If we go down a little bit farther, you'll see we do have news items as we did on the other website. These are going to be more of a long-form news release. You can see we have a couple on here now. Typically, these will be the press releases I'll send to The Times and other places as well, and they'll go here on the, on the front page of the website. We have, and I think this is something that a lot of people are excited about, our events calendar. This does auto-populate for our city meetings, but we do hand add some other things on. We're working on getting more community events onto this section, and that's going to be great for us as well, especially as we move into summer for all the things going out, the parks and Benson, and, you know, everywhere around town, really. Then moving down, you can see we've got the live feed. A lot of our live feed items you will also see on Facebook. I do like to scatter our media across as many means as I possibly can. This is really great for me and others because we can auto-post to Facebook from our live feed, which is, it improves our workflow greatly. And then you'll see, we have our, our normal bottom footer with our mission statement here and contact information. And I did want to point out that we also have the App Store, both Apple and Android apps available. This is something that came with this website, that this vendor has, is known for, and it was a deciding factor. So, that I can actually show as well, and I'm going to have to join on my phone now. If you'd like to see it, but while we're doing that, if anyone has any questions, feel free.
Is it about three weeks of the website, four weeks?
Yeah, I think we're sitting at about four weeks now.
I think it looks great, and I think you probably work on it. Something interesting that I've noted is, it's interesting how quickly Google does index the new pages on a website. Even from last week to just now, I searched some terms, and last week it was not finding them when I searched some, but this week it is, so it's interesting to see that get populated.
Great, it's good to have that feedback. That, that was a worry a couple of weeks ago. Since you're mentioning search, I also did want to point out, we do have a really great search function on this website, that you can search amongst documents in our live feed items, you can narrow your search down to those types of things if you choose. So, if you know you saw a news item last summer on some construction, you can narrow your search down there. I think I need permission on my phone. Did you give me lead? I believe so, yeah. Oh, I need to stop sharing. Okay, yeah, I need to stop sharing. There we go. Gets a little complicated when you're trying to show things from more than one device. All right. I'll share our screen. There are two of me, I'll just hop out on this one really quick. It gets confusing. Okay, thank you. All right, I don't see much happening here. Well, I will encourage you all to download the app because it is fabulous. Quickly, I'll point out a couple of features that I really enjoy. This does have our news feed and our events right on top, so it's more of that faster-paced social media feed style to the app that we have, but there are some bonuses on there as well. We can send out notifications now, we're working amongst the leadership team to determine what and how many of those to send out. I did recently do one for water hydrant flushing, hydrant flushing, so we're still working on that. You can also go directly to the forms that we have on the website and fill those out. So, very easy for people mobilely to access what they need to pretty quickly, and you can view the whole site from there as well. Questions?
So, one of the things I wanted to highlight on the main site was the automatic translation feature.
Sure.
I thought that was one of the coolest things about this site, is you can automatically get that in multiple languages.
That is true, we can do, oh, I bounced out of it already. I have Spanish, English, and Hmong on there currently. Those would be the three most common in Wisconsin. We can always add more languages, it's powered by Google Translate, so anybody can understand, and it really does a great job of switching languages quickly.
I guess the, the last thing is, like, you take requests for hot buttons.
(laughing)
I, I think, I think one of them would be the most, the most current edition of the city connection.
The city connection, okay.
Because that's, on Facebook, for those of you who are still out there, all, a lot of those questions come down to, how do you do X, and it's page seventeen of, you know, leaf pickups on that one, or...
Okay, all right.
So, a lot of those questions can be answered pretty quickly by, it's this, go take a look at the city connection.
Sure, that's great feedback, thank you.
Thank you.
Is the vendor we switched to APTAG?
It is APTAG, and Watertown Unified has that as well. They've recently been going into municipalities, and there are a couple municipalities that I talked to that really had good things to say.
I'll just say that, yeah, I looked at, I looked at the site, you know, the whole PC was terrific, it was really more great than mobile version, it's really mobile-friendly, it's fast, it was great, I'm downloading the app now.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, well, thank, thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Yeah. Item H, yeah, AV refresher?
Yes. I feel really certain I can look there, so I can see you all while I'm talking to you. So, this is just an agenda item to give you a refresher and a chance to ask questions on our audio system in this room. You've been using it for the past month, and it seems to be working well. Just a couple of reminders, you do have to mute and unmute your own mics, and most of you are aware of that. Sometimes it'll catch us off-guard, even in leadership team meetings, right? We forget to turn our mics on or forget to turn them off. The mics at your chairs are very sensitive to motions that you make down here. Mine is less so, but if you can just keep that in mind, if you're, if you're prone to tapping or shuffling papers, that is usually picked up, both here in room and maybe more so to a degree on YouTube. Other than that, it's fairly, fairly simple, speak into the mic. Does anyone have questions? No? Okay, well, great, thank you.
I turned mine back on, thank you, Lisa.
Uh-huh.
Okay, new business convene into closed session per statute one nine point eight five to conserve licensing or discipline, may person licensed by board or commission or the investigation of charges against such a person, and to take in a formal action on any such matter provided that the person licensed is given actual notice of an voluntary hearing which may be held prior to final action being taken and of any meeting at which final action may be taken. The notice shall contain a statement that the person has a right to demand the voluntary hearing or meeting be held in open session. This closed session does not apply to any such evidentiary hearing or meeting where the person's license requests an open session be held to discuss specific licenses. This is Spencer T. O'Knight's LLC liquor license. Mr. Lampy?
I would so move.
Okay. Wash my lampy, move in the closed session.
Second.
Second by Arnett. Any discussion? Okay, take your role, please.
Lampy?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Blanke?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Arnett?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Maldenauer?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.[1602.16]
I move to suspend the license of Tequila Knights LLC for thirty days within the next ninety days as per the licensing board memo dated April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, citing ordinance two twenty dash eleven, section D three B. With contiguous day suspension rules as detailed in that memo, and with the understanding that an alcohol license issued in twenty-twenty-five would be conditional on completing the remainder of this suspension within its original timeframe.
Okay. I have a motion by Lampy. Second by Mouldenhour. Okay, any further discussion or comments? Okay. Can you take the role, please, Sherri?
Lampy?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Blankey?
Aye.
Smith? Arnett?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Mouldenhour?
Aye.
Davis? Motion passed.
Thank you. All right. Section ten, miscellaneous business payroll summary, April second to fifteenth. Any comments? Okay. Move on to ordinances then. A, ordinance twenty-five dash zero eight, amend chapter five fifty, official zoning map of the city of Watertown, and change one hundred East Division Street, pin number two nine one zero eight one five zero four one two zero two nine, and one oh four East Division Street, pin number two nine one zero nine one five three three four three zero five three. From general business zoning to central business zoning. Sponsored by myself and the Plan Commission. That's first reading.
I'll move for ordinance twenty-five dash zero eight.
Okay. Motion by Blankey.
Second.
Second by Barts. Any discussion?
If I may, please. So I have heard a few, from a few residents of my district regarding this, and in particular, they've pointed out the, in discussing the potential development proposed for this location, concerns around parking. And I think it's important to note that this rezoning, while its timing is certainly tied with that other item, it does not actually make it possible for the plans that are proposed by the builder to move forward because the central business district zoning that is proposed here does not allow for first-floor apartments. So just because we would potentially rezone this does not mean that the builder can now move forward with the plans as proposed. They will still have to go through the phase of a planned unit overlay, at which point we should, I hope, as a city government, pay very close attention to the parking requirements that we're going to put in place for that. Again, they're asking for some flexibility, and it is appropriately appropriate for the city to also have an ask of the builder in terms of meeting the needs of them. So I just want to make a note that there's a slight misunderstanding that this rezoning means they can move ahead with their plan as perceived, but the builder doesn't, doesn't, the builder understands that's not the case, but members of the public have a misunderstanding. There's much more work to be done here, and again, I just want to urge us that when we get to that next phase, we pay very close attention to the parking requirements that we're going to ask them.
Anybody else?
I would, if I may?
Alderman Blankey?
The, a- as Alder Arnett mentioned, the developer actually pulled their original plans off of the last Plan Commission agenda in response to, I believe, some of the public comments that they heard and the concerns. So I believe that the developer is open to the city and the neighborhood's concerns.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Move for a roll call, then, please. Thanks, Sherri.
Blankey?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Arnett?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Mouldenhour?
Aye.
Davis? Lampy?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, thank you. Resi- exhibit nine seven three nine. Sorry. I got B yet, don't I? Sorry. Eleven B, ordinance twenty-five zero nine, amend chapter five fifty, zoning code through amendments of language to sections five fifty dash fifteen and five fifty dash three four B, and five fifty dash four, four nine G, sponsored by myself and the Plan Commission. That's first reading.
I'll move for ordinance fifteen, twenty-five dash zero nine.
Motion by Blankey?
I'll second.
Second by Arnett. Any discussion? Take your role, please, Sherri.
Blankey?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Arnett?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Mouldenhour?
Aye.
Davis? Lampy?
Aye.
Barts? Motion passed.
Okay, thank you. Move on to resolutions then. Going to resolution B, exhibit nine seven three nine, resolution to update license fee schedule Watertown Department of Public Health, sponsored by Alderman Davis, Alderman Smith from Watertown Board of Health. Move for the adoption of exhibit ninety-seven thirty-nine. Okay, motion by Smith. Second by Davis. Okay, discussion, questions? Okay, take your role, please.
Smith?
Aye.
Arnett?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Mouldenhour?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Lampy?
Aye.
Barts? Blankey?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Part C, exhibit nine seven four zero, resolution to award Plaza Phase Two ADA concrete ramp improvement contract ten dash twenty-five, alternate bid B to Mas Brothers Construction Company for one hundred forty-five thousand one hundred seventy dollars, sponsored by Alderman Arnett from Public Works Commission.
So moved.
Motion by Arnett. Second by Barts. Any discussion, comments?
Arnett?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Mouldenhour?
Aye.
Davis? Lampy?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Blankey?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Motion passed.
D, exhibit nine seven four one, resolution to discontinue a portion of public way at Cole Street, sponsored by myself and the Plan Commission. Motion by Wetzel?
Second.
Second by... Second by Blanke. Second by Blanke. Any comments, questions? Any comments, questions?
Wetzel. Wetzel.
Aye. Aye.
Mouldenhour. Mouldenhour.
Aye. Aye.
Davis. Davis.
Aye. Aye.
Lampy. Lampy.
Aye. Aye.
Barts. Barts.
Aye. Aye.
Blanke. Blanke.
Aye. Aye.
Smith. Smith.
Aye. Aye.
Arnett. Arnett.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passed. Motion passed.
Okay, thank you. E exhibit nine seven four two, resolution to extend an on-call general support service Okay, thank you. E exhibit nine seven four two, resolution to extend an on-call general support service task order twenty one zero one with Strand Associates Incorporated sponsored by Alderman Arnett task order twenty one zero one with Strand Associates Incorporated sponsored by Alderman Arnett from Public Works Commission. from Public Works Commission.
So moved. So moved.
Motion by Arnett and second by Mouldenhour. Okay, questions or discussion? Motion by Arnett and second by Mouldenhour. Okay, questions or discussion? Okay, Sherri. Okay, Sherri.
Arnett. Arnett.
Aye. Aye.
Wetzel. Wetzel. Mouldenhour. Mouldenhour.
Aye. Aye.
Davis. Davis.
Aye. Aye.
Lampy. Lampy.
Aye. Aye.
Barts. Barts.
Aye. Aye.
Blanke. Blanke.
Aye. Aye.
Smith. Smith.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passed. Motion passed.
Okay, item F exhibit nine seven four three, resolution to award two thousand twenty five private lead Okay, item F exhibit nine seven four three, resolution to award two thousand twenty five private lead service lateral replacement contract number twelve dash twenty five sponsored by Alderman Arnett service lateral replacement contract number twelve dash twenty five sponsored by Alderman Arnett from Public Works Commission. from Public Works Commission.
So moved. So moved.
Motion by Arnett. Motion by Arnett.
Second. Second.
Second by Davis. Questions, comments? Second by Davis. Questions, comments?
Just one brief comment. I mentioned it at Public Works as well that this will effectively, well, Just one brief comment. I mentioned it at Public Works as well that this will effectively, well, this will have Watertown with no lead laterals. this will have Watertown with no lead laterals, which is a huge feather in our cap. I think it's Huge feather in our cap. I think it's something that a lot of communities have struggled with over something that a lot of communities have struggled with over the decades, lead being an extremely the decades, lead being an extremely serious health concern, especially for children, and to ha- have serious health concern, especially for children, and to ha- have the light at the end of the tunnel the light at the end of the tunnel of having all of our lead laterals gone is a huge plus for the city. of having all of our lead laterals gone is a huge plus for the city.
If I may. If I may.
Alderman Arnett. Alderman Arnett.
It's important to note that the prior work for lead service lateral removal was entirely funded It's important to note that the prior work for lead service lateral removal was entirely funded at the state or federal level, but these subsequent rounds here and before us are not there. It is, at the state or federal level, but these subsequent rounds here and before us are not there. It is, it's essentially broken up almost on a block by block basis in the street depending on census. it's essentially broken up almost on a block by block basis in the street depending on census. So some houses will be a hundred percent paid for by state and federal, some will not and there'll So some houses will be a hundred percent paid for by state and federal, some will not and there'll be a portion of that cost that will fall to the city. The total cost over the three years is approximately be a portion of that cost that will fall to the city. The total cost over the three years is approximately one point two million dollars that we're anticipating will flow to the city. one point two million dollars that we're anticipating will flow to the city. The work will be prioritized The work will be prioritized so that those areas that have a hundred percent coverage will happen so that those areas that have a hundred percent coverage will happen first so we have some time, first so we have some time, but it is important to note that it's a significant cost that the but it is important to note that it's a significant cost that the water utility will have to bear water utility will have to bear and the city will have to bear and we need to be planning for that and the city will have to bear and we need to be planning for that here and now. here and now.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, take your role please, Sherri. Okay, take your role please, Sherri.
Arnett. Arnett.
Aye. Aye.
Wetzel. Wetzel. Mouldenhour. Mouldenhour. Davis. Davis. Lampy. Lampy.
Aye. Aye.
Barts. Barts.
Aye. Aye.
Blanke. Blanke.
Aye. Aye.
Smith. Smith.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passed. Motion passed.
G exhibit nine seven four four, purchase additional right of way required for city of Watertown Dewey Avenue G exhibit nine seven four four, purchase additional right of way required for city of Watertown Dewey Avenue reconstruction project sponsored by myself and the finance committee. Reconstruction Project sponsored by myself and the finance committee.
So moved. So moved. Second. Second.
Motion by Blanke, second by Davis. Okay, questions, comments? Motion by Blanke, second by Davis. Okay, questions, comments? Okay, thank you Sherri. Okay, thank you Sherri.
Blanke. Blanke.
Aye. Aye.
Smith. Smith.
Aye. Aye.
Arnett. Arnett.
Aye. Aye.
Wetzel. Wetzel.
Aye. Aye.
Mouldenhour. Mouldenhour.
Aye. Aye.
Davis. Davis. Lampy. Lampy.
Aye. Aye.
Barts. Barts.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passed. Motion passed.
Okay. Okay. H exhibit nine seven four five, resolution to enter into the release agreement between Grant RE H exhibit nine seven four five, resolution to enter into the release agreement between Grant RE Incorporated Incorporated and the city of Watertown sponsored by Alderman Arnett from Public Works Commission. and the city of Watertown sponsored by Alderman Arnett from Public Works Commission.
Just from a point of order perspective, we could go into closed session first before we have a motion Just from a point of order perspective, we could go into closed session first before we have a motion on the resolution. on the resolution.
Yeah. Yeah. So I'll read, read to them your suggestion? So I'll read, read to them your suggestion? Yeah, okay, convening the closed session per statute one nine point eight five to confer with legal counsel Yeah, okay, convening the closed session per statute one nine point eight five to confer with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or it is likely to become involved, release by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or it is likely to become involved, release agreeing between Grant RE Incorporated and the city of Watertown. agreeing between Grant RE Incorporated and the city of Watertown.
We have to go into closed session. We have to go into closed session.
Motion by Arnett. Motion by Arnett. Second, second by Wetzel. Second, second by Wetzel. Any discussion? Any discussion? Okay, take a role please. Okay, take a role please.
Arnett. Arnett.
Aye. Aye.
Wetzel. Wetzel. Mouldenhour. Mouldenhour.
Aye. Aye.
Davis. Davis.
Aye. Aye.
Lampy. Lampy.
Aye. Aye.
Barts. Barts.
Aye. Aye.
Blanke. Blanke.
Aye. Aye.
Smith. Smith.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passed. Motion passed.
Okay. Okay.